Have best allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common like voice of the citizens, one nation, one empire, indivisible, earth and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Let's give Patty a big hand. Thank you, Patty. Good job.
Good job.
Okay, Mr. Miller, roll call, please.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Show her absent and excused. She took ill right before the meeting started, and I think that's where Chief Harmon's at right now.
Okay. Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Carefodas.
Here.
You do have a quorum with six members present.
Thank you, sir. Item four, approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday. Senate, support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, six-zero. Move on to item five, swearing-in of Fire Marshal John Smith, and we don't have Chief Harmon here. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Miller, City Clerk.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Smith was promoted to Fire Marshal, and at this time, we would like to do the swearing-in, so if you'd like to come forward. All right. After I've been swearing-in, his wife will come up and take off his badge and give him the Fire Marshal badge. Okay, thank you. Raise your right hand to repeat after me. I, John Smith.
I, John Smith.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the rank of Fire Marshal.
The rank of Fire Marshal.
For the Garden City Fire Department.
For the Garden City Fire Department.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve the citizens.
To serve the citizens.
Of the city of Garden City.
Of the city of Garden City.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
And to uphold the laws and constitution.
To uphold the laws and constitution.
I mean, the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the city of Garden City.
And the city of Garden City.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture of that. Okay, very good. And then your wife's going to come up and exchange badges, so anyone do that. There you go. Want to do a picture?
Chief Harmon, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, so you can.
Not to your back.
Okay. I had a whole prepared speech. What I'd like to say is that John had spent 12 years in the private sector, where he worked as a tactical EMS medic for the Washtenaw County area law enforcement agencies in addition to the Michigan State Police. He came out into Garden City from Westland, where he began his fire service career, and he's been with us just over five years. He discovered he had a passion for fire prevention, and he came to me after he completed most of his training in the other areas that are required for entry-level firefighter, paramedics, and he took the courses, Fire Inspector One, Fire Inspector Two, and Plans Examiner, and he had an opportunity to work with the retired, now-retired Fire Marshal Brian Finnerin. So part of his training required he did fire inspections, but he took it a step further, and he and the other candidate as well, we had a competitive test, they both worked with the Fire Marshal, so they had quite a bit of orientation into the field. So I'm very happy to have John in this position, and did they introduce the children? There's Josie, Johnny, and Jude. And then his brother, firefighters are here, Captain Keane, firefighter Gazdag, firefighter Castleberry, and firefighter Bernhardt.
Very good.
So we're very happy to have him.
County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, you're coming up as well. Come on up, sir.
John, if you could hang on just for a second.
Yes, sir.
I've got some for you. I appreciate having the opportunity to present to you a resolution from the county, Wayne County, and Westland's loss is Garden City's gain. And congratulations on the promotion, and really happy that you're able to do even more great things for Garden City. Thank you. Congratulations. You keep taking care of your dad.
We're going to take a two-minute recess. Two-minute recess, please.
Can I ask you a question about my disability by a muscle?
Thirty seconds, please, thirty seconds. Okay, we're back in session. We'll move on to item six, comments from state and county officials. You want to come up again, Commissioner Glenn Anderson?
Very briefly, I'd just like to say good evening to everyone in Garden City, and I wanted to, guess one of the first things, and I'm sure everyone's aware of this, districts have changed, and I will not be representing Garden City after the end of the year on the county commission. It's been a pleasure of mine to do that, and I've had many conversations with all of you, almost every one of you, and I know we've had a great addition to Wayne County departments recently, and we have a veteran that all of you would recognize, he's sitting in the middle of the table there, that is our Veterans Representative now, and I think there's been a vacancy in that position for some time, so we're glad to have him there for Wayne County's Veterans Representative. So, and he's already got something set up at the center, the new center that the city has picked up, and there's a new location there for veterans to come in and check into services, and I know I've got a request of him, so tomorrow I'll give you a call, but a veteran that's asked for some information to distribute to other veterans, and I know he's quite engaged and wants to be very active with that. But anyway, that's all I have. I don't really have, oh, I did have a couple of things, couple of delays on projects that were disappointing to me. Cherry Hill, the completion of Cherry Hill, all the way to Inkster City or Inkster Road, just east of Inkster Road is where the city's, or the county's responsibility ends, and it becomes a city road after that point. But that project now, I just spoke to the engineering department today, they said that it's going to be delayed until April of next year, that's when they expect it'll happen. There was a delay in getting everything set up with Ajax paving, and so that's been delayed. The bridge project on, I know it's not in Garden City, but on Merriman Road, those two bridges, over Hines and over the waterway there, that's been delayed too. There was a snafu sort of within the department, getting everything from the state, and to be able to go, we did approve the contract for it, but it's going to be delayed also until spring of next year, with the, you know, the light show that goes on, they couldn't do that at the same time with all that traffic that that causes, and some of the displays that are hung on one of those bridges, and so that'll be done though next year. So I'm looking forward to that. It's going to be a headache for people that travel Merriman Road, they're going to have to find alternative routes, Middle Belt, go a little further over to Wayne Road, something like that, but the Wayne Road project that everyone's been getting, I've been getting tons of complaints about the length of time that it took to do that, which I agree was much longer than it should have been, it is complete now, so that section. The thing that we have to look forward to now is next year, that southern part is going to go under construction from Cherry Hill south to Palmer Road, so, and that'll probably be another engineering and M dot project. So it's, you know, it's, I shouldn't say short-term pain, because that was much more than a short-term pain. The inconvenience was just incredible for drivers in Westland, and I know there's a lot of Garden City residents that go to Wayne Road and go up and down that section too, as do our school buses for the Wayne-Westland School District, but it's, these things will, I think, be a great improvement to both communities, and, but anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to presentation, Mr. Marsiniak, the water bill.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the citizens of Garden City. Just wanted to briefly announce that we updated our water bills, they, actually, the new ones went out last, last, last week, and therefore, we're going to, I want to briefly show you what the old bill looked like. It might be a little small on the screens, but basically, your bare bones kind of a bill, gave you the necessary information, and that was about it. And so we, we took it upon ourselves to update our bills, as we have more information, and several of the neighboring communities, along with your other bills, have more information on them, so we decided to move that along as well. So the new bill will still present some, some of the same information that was on the other one, but I just wanted to draw your attention, obviously, to the new graph that we included, similar to the other utility bills, has the year's worth of your last usage, so the previous seven bills, including the current one. So a lot of times, we have questions that come up in the summer that we've used, you know, why is my water bill higher than the previous months, or this, or that, usually has to do with, obviously, watering gardens and lawns, but we can also easily, hopefully, they can, you know, determine that, oh, that was the same amount that I used last year. Also, a kind of, if we have a trend where we're slowly getting a leak at somebody's place, it kind of demonstrates that the water usage is going up, but it kind of gives them a visual of historically, and we've had no real historic information on the bill, of what's happening. Another brief thing I'd like to show you is, in red now, we put a couple of new items, just for everybody who's out there, this is the city water bill, it says the total amount due in red, but sometimes people get credits, sometimes we do the, they do an automatic ACH payment, so they don't need to pay that. That amount in red will change, so we've added a couple of colors to try to help people who have a credit bill, something like that, not make another payment. So anyone has any questions, if they want some additional information and help understanding the bill, they can contact the Water Department office at 734-793-1630, and we'd be happy to help them, and I think the Water Department did a good job updating our bills for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I should ask, any questions from Council?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I see Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib walked in. I think you were here for the Fire Marshal, John Smith, and he just left, but if, if you want to come up and speak on it, and we'll give him the plaque that you brought, you can still present it on the TV screen, and he'll see it. And we'll make sure.
I'm going to run it store, Mayor, and just.
Yeah, you can do that, but you can.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Honorable Mayor, and of course, our council members. I'm so honored to be able to continue this incredible working relationship with your Fire Chief, just been amazing to work with her, especially on grant opportunities and other kinds of challenges that I think we, we want to be able to work together to overcome. But she told me about John and his promotion, and so one of the things that I get to do, I didn't know this before I got elected, but I get to put something in the congressional record that sits there forever. So his name and his public service to our community here is going to be in the 117th Congressional Journal forever, so this is, everything that's here written is going to be able to continue to honor him, so his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, everyone be able to see his name and all the incredible work that he's been able to do, and now for us to be able to honor him and his promotion, so, so this is for the recognition of John Smith, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Did you want to walk it over then? Is that what you were going to?
I'm going to go give it to him, yeah, yeah, but hang on.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have no community events tonight, petitions and communications. I have about three communications for the residents. Okay, Wayne County Executive Warren Evans, a week or so ago, the Health Department began administering the Pfizer and the Moderna COVID-19 vaccine booster shots. All COVID-19 vaccines are available at no cost to eligible residents of Wayne County-sponsored vaccine sites. The Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC recommends the updated COVID-19 boosters to all individuals 12 years and older to better protect against the most recent circulating COVID-19 variant and restore protection since the previous vaccination. The updated boosters target the most recent COVID-19 Omicron sub-variants BA4 and BA5, which are the most, which are more contagious and more resistant than the earlier strains of Omicron. Individuals are eligible to receive the boosters from Pfizer 12 years and older and Moderna 18 years and older, if it has been at least two months since the completion of your primary vaccination series or last booster dose. COVID-19 vaccines and boosters are the single most effective tool against the virus for better protection and to keep the pandemic manageable as we all enter into the fall and winter months. We strongly encourage all eligible residents to receive, to receive the booster, stay up to date with their COVID-19 vaccinations. Please visit www.wayncity.com/covid19 for the most up-to-date list of hours and locations for Wayne County Health Department COVID-19 vaccination sites. Each site offers vaccinations and boosters for individuals six months and older at no cost. Walk-ins are welcome. For more information, including scheduling in-home vaccinations for homebound residents, please call 1-866-610-3885. That's 866-610-3885. It's good to get vaccinated before winter gets here, keep everybody safe. Secondly, I don't know if Mr. Anderson knows this or not, I talked to the Wayne County DPS Director, they're going to repave Inkster from Ford Road to Warren starting Wednesday, from Ford Road to Warren, starting Wednesday, weather permitting. And then also, we are in desperate need of volunteers for Meals on Wheels packaging, and for drivers, if you can help deliver these meals to our seniors, please call 734-326-5341. That's 734-326-5341, or go to wayncity.com/svs and fill out a volunteer application. They do reimburse for gasoline for fuel at 58 and a half cents per mile, so if you can do that, we desperately need some drivers to feed, help feed our Meals on Wheels program here in Garden City. And that's all the communications I have. We have no public hearing tonight. We'll move on to item 11, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A, one and two. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six-zero. Item two, the amendment number four to the water service contract with Great Lakes Water Authority. Want to call up DPS Director, Mr. Brad Omen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I recently attended a meeting with GLWA for our contract re-opener. GLWA conducts this every four years with all of its 85 partners, so everybody plays on the same field. The purpose of this is to review the data from years past to determine the rates in which the city pays each year for water purchase. The process went very smoothly, because there has been no really big changes in our system. GLWA uses six measures to represent our use of the GLWA system to allocate the costs. They are water purchase, max day data, peak hour data, distance, elevation, and wholesale meters. The charge volume is calculated by taking the average of the prior three years of the billed volume. Garden City seen no change in the peak months of April till September, but saw a 2% reduction in the base months of October through March, which could reflect the change in water use habits. Two key factors are based on the max day and the peak hour data. Our max day is set at 3.30 million gallons a day, and our peak hour is set at 5.21 million gallons a day. These will remain unchanged in the contract. Our annual projected and minimum volume will also remain the same at 92,000 and 46,000 MCF. One minor change to the contract is that GLWA has removed the minimum take-or-pay clause found in section 5.06. This clause required partners to purchase not less than the minimum volume of water in the contract, or otherwise pay for the minimum amount. Over time, the charges have shifted to the recovery of 60% of the water revenue on a fixed-cost basis. This change eliminates the need for the MTP clause, because regardless of the amount of water used, customers are still responsible for the payment of the monthly fixed charge. This amendment is for your consideration this evening. This is the Fourth Amendment to the contract since we entered into the agreement in 2009.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Omen?
Mayor, so are you, overall, are you saying, is this going to affect?
After all that, does it affect the payments? Does it affect the cost for this?
We're basically staying status quo, but we'll still get yearly increases for operations through GLWA. I think this past year, we, a 3% rate charge, so.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about something they have to do?
I do. The 3% you're talking about, was that regarding to the city or to the citizens?
GLWA passed the net onto the city.
Okay. Okay. Motion's in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve amendment number four to the water service contract with the Great Lakes Water Authority. Support.
Support, Councilmember Squires. Any further comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Earl.
The only thing I'm going to say is that this is.
Has nothing to do with Garden City, or Brad, it's the GLWA that I'm addressing. I have an issue that they never come out here and talk to us. They do all this, we have to vote on this, but when they took money from us to pay for a city that was delinquent, and they didn't come to us to ask us to vote on it, they just stole our money. So I have an issue with anything that comes from the GLWA, because I don't trust them. We don't, we don't know who gets appointed, we don't get any information on the board, they never come out here and answer questions, so I don't trust them. We're hemmed in, because there's nothing else we can do, but they don't operate a very above-the-board procedure, in my opinion. I would love to see one of them come out here and speak to us and our citizens, because I'm sure our citizens have questions, that's all.
Anybody else from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. So, what do we got, one, two, what do we got, four-two?
Yes.
Motion passes, four-two. Item three, HVAC preventive maintenance services, Mr. Omen, again.
This is to approve a three-year contract extension for HVAC preventive maintenance services for all our city buildings with Tech Mechanical. Tech Mechanical has been our contractor for this service for almost 20 years. They have great knowledge of all our city buildings, including the new Radcliffe Center. They provide 24/7 emergency services, and they've always done an excellent job for us. There is an $1,800 per year increase with this extension, the first price increase since 2016, and there is also an $18,000 per year increase to cover the new Radcliffe Center.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Earl.
I move to approve a three-year contract extension for HVAC. We're hemmed in because there's nothing else we can do, but they don't operate a very above-the-board procedure, in my opinion. I would love to see one of them come out here and speak to us and our citizens, because I'm sure our citizens have questions. That's all.
Anybody else from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So, what do we got, 4-2?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-2. Item 3, HVAC preventative maintenance services. Mr. Omen, again.
This is to approve a three-year contract extension for HVAC preventive maintenance services for all our city buildings with Tech Mechanical. Tech Mechanical has been our contractor for this service for almost 20 years. They have great knowledge of all our city buildings, including the new Radcliffe Center. They provide 24/7 emergency services and they've always done an excellent job for us. There is an $1,800 per year increase with this extension, the first price increase since 2016, and there is also an $18,000 per year increase to cover the new Radcliffe Center.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Earl?
I move to approve a three-year contract extension for HVAC preventative maintenance services for all city buildings with Tech Mechanical of Pontiac, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $46,450 per year.
Support.
Support. Councilmember Carefotos, any comments from the table? Councilmember Jacobs?
Yeah, why is Radcliffe $18,000 a year, $9,000 a visit? Is it that much bigger, the unit's that much bigger than some of these other ones that are, you know? I know the DPW garage is small, but police department's pretty large, it's $4,500 a visit. You know, some of these other ones are, just seems like $9,000 to check the belts and the, all that is a lot of money.
Well, after we purchased Radcliffe, I figured Radcliffe Center's three times the size of the Maplewood Center, and if you look at the pricing, it's almost dead-on, $6,000 for Maplewood, $18,000 for Radcliffe. Lot of square footage, a lot of stuff going on over there.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further comments from the table?
Yes, sir. So with that increase, it's still, for the three years, will not be more than $46,450, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Oakland County IT Service Agreement, Police Chief Tim Gibbons. We weren't going to leave you out tonight.
Glad not to be left out. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is a renewal of a current agreement we have with the city, with Oakland County. They provide numerous IT services for us, includes our Police Department Report System, our information system, the fire department's reporting system, as well as some stuff for the city treasurer, tax payments online, and other various information technology services. It's just a five-year deal that continues on basically where we're at. Costs are basically determined year-to-year with some increases, but from what we've seen, they maintain static over the duration of the agreement with just regular cost increases, like 2%, 3% per year based on decisions made by the advisory boards of those. So for example, Clemis has an advisory board, which is, has a representative for all the agencies involved, so those would be with some costs, so we'd have a say in it. But really, it's just continuing on what we already have and we're very happy with the way Oakland County provides these services.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Jacobs?
I move to approve the attached intergovernmental agreement between the city of Garden City and Oakland County for information technology services.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes 6-0. This is the one I've been waiting for, and I know Councilmember Carefotos as well. Purchase of the solar-powered speed signs.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So as we've discussed in the past, you know, speeding the side streets, while we haven't seen an increase in accidents, we can all agree, nobody wants speeding on their side streets. It makes us feel unsafe, uncomfortable, and it reduces our quality of life. So at the police department, we're always looking to do that. We do throw, do so through enforcement quite often, and best we can, but we can't be everywhere. So what we're proposing tonight, and it's through much of the suggestion of council members, which is a great idea, I've seen them in other towns and they seem to be working pretty good, is the installation of your speed signs. These signs are radar signs that as you drive by them, they'll record your speed. If you exceed a certain speed limit, it'll start to blink, and as you go higher, it'll become a little more, a little more lit up and warning, and it will say, "Slow down", and hopefully people will respond. But there's an added bonus we really like about this particular one is it records data. So it'll record the speeds of the vehicles going by, times of day, days of the week. We can find out, when should we be there? Because there's only so many police officers and there's a whole lot of city streets, so we can only be so many places at certain times. So what this will give us the ability to do is install these, and we'll start with four, and if we find success in where we install them, hopefully our program will continue. But where should we be at the times? And we'll be a little more efficient operation, as well as hopefully, you know, it's always our motto, we'd rather not write anyone's ticket, we'd rather know one's speeds and we'd rather they get the proper warnings. Even without us being there, the sign can take care of that. So we'll start off with installing in some areas that the data tells us to, and then we'll move on from there. But this is just one step in continuing to address side street speeding.
Are we going to go after the major side streets like Henry Ruff, Harrison, Farmington, Hubbard?
Yes, Henry Ruff and Harrison are probably our first two, south of Ford there, both of them. Like we've discussed before, it's those wider streets that tend to make people feel comfortable doing the above-the-speed limit on, which they shouldn't, but sometimes it's environmental design. Hopefully these signs will be a nice design addition to reduce some of that, and at the very least, tell us when we should be there.
I think it's a great purchase. Okay, motions in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve the purchase of four ISQ 1200 Driver Feedback Your Speed signs at the MDOT contract price of $4,792 per sign, for a total of $19,168 from Carrier and Gable Incorporated of Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any further comments from the table?
Just a question, are these permanent, chief?
Well, they'll be installed in a manner that's permanent, but we will be able to move them if we need to, but they're not readily portable. But they'll be installed with sort of a permanent effect, but like with any sign, we can move them.
Sort of, kinda, okay.
Yeah, so it's, no one can wheel them away, and we're not going to be wheeling them from one street to the other. We plan on being a semi-permanent installation, but if we find it's not having the effect we want, or if we find it should be better somewhere else at a particular time, for the time being, then we're going to, we'll move them. It'll be a little bit more effort than just moving them around, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the table?
I have a comment. Have we talked to any other cities that have these?
Yes, so I've spoken to some, our neighbors, Westline has it around their school districts, and I've spoken with some of their officers. One of them, I was driving down the road and watching the sign, and spoke with one of the officers on Marquette there in front of John Glenn, and they seemed to be pretty effective. At the very least, just even from my own perspective, passing by them, they do, you know, if you are beginning to go above the speed limit, you see it start to blink, you see it start to slow down, and you know, even the best drivers sometimes aren't fully focused on what they should be. Your mind go drive somewhere else, this draws your attention, reminds you of your speed and causes you to slow down. So good feedback from other agencies and good feedback from my own experience.
Good.
Okay. Any comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 6, Council, I need a motion to remove the ceiling installation from the, we tabled it, it needs to be removed from the table? Motion to remove. Take it off the table.
So moved. Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's off the table. Item 7, Radcliffe Game Room Ceiling Installation. Mr. Dockerty?
Thank you, Mayor. This was tabled in reference to some questions at the last council meeting about the roof having to angle up slightly when it gets to the window area. I met with the owner of the company, Gary Johnson of GNJ Services. He assured me that it's not an issue, that they knew about that, it's not a cost issue whatsoever. I told him, give me a guarantee that it's not going to go above if you have to. He said, "There's nothing." He said, "$300 if you want to do that, but..." I said, "All right, we're good with nothing," pretty much at this point. So we're back to the question, this was the lowest bidder of the three bidders, four bidders for this project at $15,850, so the recommendation is the same, to stick with the company that was the lowest bidder for this project.
Okay, thank you. Motion's in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve a contract with GNJ Services of Taylor, Michigan, in the amount of $15,850, with funding derived from Wayne County grant for the installation of new ceiling grid, new ceiling tiles, LED lighting, and HVAC vents in the future game room in the Radcliffe Center. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? Councilmember Earl?
So this is guaranteed, if $15,850, if more has to happen, he doesn't get it.
That's what he said, but we run into that with any contract with anybody. As they bid out, there's always potential change orders that could come through, but in this situation, it's pretty straightforward of just to drop ceilings. I would expect it can be done.
Would that change order come to us?
Not usually, not unless it's a large number.
Because my only concern is, if it has to do with that one situation, then I would be disappointed if there was a change order in that. All right.
Correct.
Can you tell us what Wayne County grant is being used to pay for that?
It's the CDBG grant of $200,000 for the game room and-
Okay, same one.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes 6-0. We have no other business tonight. We'll move on to item 13, public comments. For items that were not on the agenda, if you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name. There is a three-minute time limit. This is your opportunity to make a statement or a comment. It is not the time to go back and forth with council members. Anybody wishing to speak? Maddie Richards?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, sweetie. Kim Dole, DDA Director. Just a final reminder, because it'll come up before we have another meeting, the Chili Cook-Off is Saturday, October 8th. We still could use some more cooking teams, so come and see me, and I'll let you know what you have to do. It's pretty easy, actually. It's a lot of fun that day, we've got a lot of stuff there, free for kids, music, just a whole bunch of stuff going on, wagon rides. Mr. Santu is hosting those again, taking us back and forth to the police station and the fire station open houses, so hope to see everybody and come on out.
Okay. Okay. Madeline Richards? Hi, Maddie.
Madeline, referring to 1111th Street, I'd like to talk about this speeding on Hubbard, because the kids have literally been hit, speeding anywhere 90 miles now on Hubbard Street. And I know companies don't do anything about it. Why is that, Mayor?
We have traffic enforcement out there, and we just bought these signs, so hopefully these signs will help.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Richards?
Anthony Richard, under the same roof as her. The chief kind of stole her thunder with the signs today, but she was concerned with, I know we had a sign that was damaged out there on Hubbard, so she was just wondering about enforcement. I couldn't be outdone by her, so I got a couple things myself, and kind of across the board, so I'll shoot them all at you once, then we can answer later, however it may be. Insight on the cannabis issue that we had about a month ago, of where the council stands? If you guys have seeped any kind of information, if we've reached out to any council, if we've narrowed it down to two or three, four or five, are we still shooting off million-dollar numbers that were a month ago, or where we stand as a city of moving forward, making a judgment on this? Second would be DPW, the pothole system of them coming out to fill. I know that I called and I was told that we'd be put on the list, and I understand that they're not coming out every single day to do it, but if this is something that's going to be seasonal, to where we're going to see potholes that are called in, requested, if they're filled before season turns and we get ice and the brand-new seal coating turns to garbage again. And lastly, about ordinance, it's about the block program. I haven't heard or seen or anything about that in quite a while. She watches a lot more meetings than I do, I'm not going to lie. So, and she couldn't tell me anything about it, which is kind of crazy, I got to get my info from an 11-year-old, but just wondering where we stand on that. I know we have more ordinance officers than we had when we started the program. COVID kind of took effect, and I know that kind of crippled it, but where we stand now, everything's back, because driving up and down the streets, we can use it, by both blight and ordinance-wise, to say it nicely. So, that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? City managers report?
All right, just one thing, Mayor, to remind people, GCU, Garden City University, October 5th is our fall semester starting up, so anybody interested, contact the administration of City Hall. It's also on our website, under Garden City University, so October 5th is the next class for those that are interested. And that's it.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I just have one item. I wanted to let all of the residents know that we're preparing the absentee ballots in the clerk's office. We're hoping to have them out by Thursday to the post office, so if you've requested an absentee ballot, it will look like this, a blue envelope that will come out to you. So be looking for it the first of next week, and then we can, of course, encourage you to vote. Vote it as soon as you can and get it back to us, and we will get it prepared for tabulation. Again, look for the blue envelopes and get them back to us as soon as you can. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes, a couple things. First, Maddie, you did an excellent job with the pledge. Very good. I want to congratulate Fire Marshal John Smith on his promotion. A week or so ago, St. Rayfield's, and I always refer to it as that, since I went there for eight years and grew up around there, had their festival, and it was a great time. Class reunion for some of us. Great weather, God shined down on us, and it was good. It was fun, and a lot of people, a lot of good friends. St. Thomas apostle, to be official, but St. Rayfield's forever. Mr. Richards, the attorney is supposed to be here October 24th to answer council's questions about the marijuana. We set a budget at a couple meetings ago for what we could spend on the attorneys, so they will be here to answer questions.
That was the 24th?
24th. It'll be at a regular council meeting, it'll be our workshop. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Carefotos?
I have just a couple things regarding animal welfare in our city. I'm happy to say that our police department now has a chip scanner, and they can read microchips on stray dogs. So lots of animal people in our city are happy about that. Also like to reiterate again, maybe starting an email or something about information for our residents. Residents are continuing to ask me about that, regarding like public notices, that kind of thing. I've brought it up a couple other times. Recently-
We have an answer for that.
Okay.
First of all, we have it on the front of the page of the website, we also have some signs out here for scanning, but I believe the next meeting, we're going to have a presentation, there is a notify-me connection to our Civic Plus system that we have-
Awesome.
-that anything changes on any agendas or any planning commission notices or anything, it'll immediately buzz them to say a change has been made, that they can click onto it.
A text or something?
Yes, it's basically what you're asking about. It's actually a system that we have behind the scenes that not everybody was aware of, so-
Oh, awesome.
-we're actually going to do a presentation next meeting from that request.
Awesome. Recently, we had that public notice for the DDA in the park, and I happened to put one up on the desk at Lucky Dog, and I was amazed how many people were like, "Why do you have this? Like, what's a public notice?" So I think our residents becoming more involved is going to be very helpful. And then one other thing I wanted to know about, our city email's not been working, and we all know that we're trying to fix it. Did we get a notice regarding when we're going to meet and talk about the managerial audit? Did we pick a date yet?
Oh, I believe that's-
We haven't picked a date yet.
Okay, and the last thing I have is, is there an update on the fire station? Are we doing that this year, or is that pushed back to next year?
Well, they're putting it back out to bid. We received one bidder that was way overpriced, and that's usually bad juju with one bidder. So we're looking to bid it out again, just by Christmas time, to try to get the spring bids in. The issue they have is 60 days for pricing, so if we bid it out right now, nobody can construct anything anyway until April, March, April, so the engineers are holding off on bidding it out now, although I was hoping to get ahead of the construction, they said nobody can give a set pricing. So it came out over $400 a square foot, and that's medical hospital numbers, it's not just the fire station extension, so it was way overpriced.
Are we getting just one bidder, just because of everything, like nobody's working, or they just can't?
It depends on, it could be possibly time of the year, everyone's got something else to do, but it's, some will do that, come in at the last minute, just with a bid at a high price, and see if we fall for it, but we just can't for that. For what we're asking for, it was way overbid.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Lynch?
Yes, I have an announcement I'm going to read. Garden City High School Theater Program is hosting play auditions for all youth actors and actresses from Memorial Elementary, Douglas Elementary, Farmington Elementary, and Garden City Middle School for their play, A Christmas Carol. Open auditions are being held by, on Wednesday, October 5th- Open auditions are being held by, on Wednesday, October 5th, and Thursday, October 6th. All auditions will be held in Room 106 at Garden City High School. Parents must attend with their child. For more information and to sign up for an audition time, please email Alan Bennett, Garden City High School Theater Director, at BennettA@gardencityschools.com. And then there is one other one. This one says, introducing a new theater boot camp for all ages. Civic Theater, Theater Boot Camp for Kids and Theater Boot Camp for Adults. And for more information on Theater Boot Camp Meeting on Tuesday, September 27th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Radcliffe Center. And for more information, contact the Garden City Parks and Recreation at 734-793-1850. And one other thing, as Maddie mentioned about people speeding, as I was sitting here, my sister texted me, she was just in an accident, some crazy person driving and not paying attention. I've, I've seen it way too much lately, where people are crossing over two lanes to make a right-hand turn, and running orange lights, as they call them. Well, they're, they know it's going to be red, they need to stop, they need to pay attention to what's going on. So please, especially when you're on the side streets, the speed limit is 25, not 30, not 32, it's 25. We don't need to post 25 on every side street, because that is the official speed limit for all residential areas. So please, just do your best to tell everyone you can, watch what, how they're driving, no texting while you're driving, pay attention, and do the speed limit. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Yes, thank you, Maddie, you did a great job with the pledge, and thank you for being as young as you are and so concerned about city government. That's good to hear. Also, congratulations to our new Fire Marshal, John Smith, and thank you, Chief, for the speed signs and the chip reader. And other than that, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl?
Thank you, Mayor, and first, obviously, congratulations to John Smith. It's an important job in the city, and I'm glad to see that it went to a good person. I do like the new layout for the, the water bills. I think it's going to be helpful to our residents to be able to see the water output, to see if they have an issue. I'm glad that we upgraded to that. And, you know, I agree with what Maddie says, obviously with my former profession, speeding is ridiculous, especially in the side streets. You know, this is a, a city that has a lot of children, children don't pay attention, they run into the street when they're playing. You know, it's our job as adults to pay attention for them, and if you're speeding, you can't react. So please, listen to what she had to say in Slow Down, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I got a few things. First off, I want to thank Mayor Protem Squires for running the meeting two weeks ago, when I was on vacation at my annual family reunion. He did a great job, thank you for, for doing that. I also want to thank the, the people at St. Thomas the Apostle, or St. Rayfield's, like Councilmember Jacobs said, it's like a high school reunion. If you, if you grew up in Garden City, it's like a high school reunion every year, you see everybody that you went to school with, and they always do a fantastic job with that festival. I want to congratulate Fire Marshal John Smith on his promotion, and thank you, Maddie, you did an excellent job. Usually when we use elementary students that are real quiet and meek, and you just blurted it right out there, you did a fantastic job. So, and then to, our prayers go out to Councilmember DeMichael, she had a medical issue in the back right before we came out here. I just wish her a speedy recovery and hope she's okay. And that's all I have, no further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.